All right, welcome all. We will get started here and we will call on our outstanding Register of Deeds, Kelly Fundabert, to lead us in the invocation.
Good morning, friends. I'm happy to be here and lead us in the prayer this morning, so if you guys will pray with me.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful morning and for the grace and mercies you give us each day. Lord, we do not know what today will bring, but we know you bring the day, and for that, we are thankful. We come before you now grateful for the opportunity to gather and work together in this wonderful community. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve our citizens. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in all that we say and do. Help us work with integrity and respect for one another and lead us so that in everything we do, we honor you. We love you, Lord. Be with you, be with us in this meeting. Amen.
Amen. And now we'll call on our great CFO, Robin West, to lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Renninger, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, any discussion? All in favor? Uplifted hand? All right, that's good. Ms. Robin?
Good morning. So this morning, we will take a look at the comparative information between August of this year to August of last year for the general fund. We're only two months in. And as you can see down at the bottom, the rightmost bottom number, we're about $5,500, the same as we were last year. There's some differences. As you can see, property taxes, that will probably be closer, and we anticipate a little bit higher than we were as we get closer to the January deadline. There's some differences in expenditures. One of those is mostly due to our capital projects contribution that we made earlier in the year, last fiscal year. We plan to do that, I think, in September this year. So we're in pretty good shape. Again, we're only two months in, so it's kind of hard to tell any trends at this point in time. But, you know, I don't see anything, any concerns that I have or anything like that, so let me know if you have any questions. Also, I'll show you the chart. Revenues, again, they're pretty close. Lots of the differences, as you see, the bars are the current fiscal year, the yellow line is last fiscal year, and the green line is fiscal year '23. Lots of the differences right now are just timing of when we are receiving payments.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Brian, pending actions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everybody. In our October meeting, we are looking for reappointments to the JCPC board, and we are also looking for reappointments for our planning board. You have the names of the individuals on your agenda. If there's anybody else you'd like to consider, if you would just get those to Karen. October is also a month for domestic violence awareness, breast cancer awareness, Fire Prevention Week, and Family Promise Week. We will be bringing to you a resolution that is coming from NC DOT. The state has found some money within their state contingency fund to pay Fernwood Drive here in Davie County. This is fully state-funded funds. There's no county money. As you all know, counties do not do roads. However, for DOT to do the project, they need you all to bless it. So you should be getting a copy of that in your agenda. We have a situation here in town, excuse me, in the county, with a septic system that is causing some issues with environmental health. They have gone through all their routes of enforcement. We have an open system. The property, the residents have not fully complied, and I think our attorney is going to bring you a resolution, given him the authority to press suit on the situation. We've done some of these summer in the past. They were not on environmental health side. They were on some of the solid wayside. But in order for us to do our next step in enforcement, we will need a resolution. So I think Ed is working on that. Also, you will, we, an item that we worked on this week that we're going to bring to you. We have an opportunity to partner with Columbus County as a redundancy backup on our 911 communications. Just in the event that we go down and our backup goes down and somebody else goes down, it just keeps us in the loop so that we don't lose any, if we have any emergencies, they can tie into us to be able to dispatch. And then also, we would be there backup to backup to backup. So we're just making sure. You don't want all of your backups in the same region as you, just in case whatever's affecting us may be affecting them, so spreading it across the state gives us the ability to flip those switches to keep that communication in line, because we can't dispatch our emergency services where not much we can do. So we've been working on that. So that's what we have so far for October. Obviously, there's still a few days left before we print the agenda, so a few more items may come up, but if they do, we will let you know. Answer any questions?
Any questions for Brian? And I would say this, commissioners, you know, as always, if you have anything you need placed on the agenda, just let Brian or Karen know, and we'll work on that. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Brian. And now we'll move on to discussion items. Mowing and lawn care. Brad?
Morning, Board. How are y'all?
Good.
Good, good. Well, I just want to get in front of y'all, this month, coming on the heels of our custodial contract, we need to be looking at our ground services, ground maintenance, and mowing. This contract or services really works and applies to just about the same way our custodial does. In the past, we've always contracted that out. I think it's been 15 years since we had done it in-house. Those were originally started with the maintenance crew. Facility maintenance covered the mowing, but at that time, we were much smaller, not as many facilities. So we'll go through, county has and operates out of 28 different locations historically. Like I said, that's been contracted out for the last 15 years. Those contracts handle mowing, edging, weed control, mulching, and fertilizing. Just to give you a good reference of, this is an overview of all of our county facilities now. So on the right there in the small green county map, those pins indicate all of our facilities across the county. The larger picture behind it is just the downtown Knoxville area. So you can see that, you know, a large concentration is here on the square at Dr. Slate Campus with the EMS 911 and Senior Center. So it just gives you a good visual that, you know, we're spread out across the county pretty well. Even, you know, with the addition of Station 5, you're going to have a new pin up there in that northwest corner for a new EMS station. That will be brought online and require mowing as well. Here's, and last year, probably 12 months ago at the same time, we looked at bidding our current contract out. Received 11 bids. Those bids ranged from $100,000 to $480,000. You know, looking at those bids, we knew some of the ones that were really low. We had some bad references for those. And in talking with our past vendor and even local vendors here in the county, that, you know, I received a lot of bids, but not a lot of local bids. You know, some of the ones that you would think you would have seen did not bid after the bidding process. You know, I went and talked to them, tried to figure out why they did not, and they realized it was a large contract. You know, they've already, they're well-established. They have their residential customers. To take on a bid of the county, they would have to add a new crew. So they weren't willing to sacrifice their residential customers or get any larger than what they were, so they just did not bid. The additional services and expenses outside of the current contract. So the current contract is just for mowing, edging, blowing, and weed control. We're contracting out additional mulching, pressure washing, pruning of larger shrubs and trees. And the concerns with the current contractor I have is the poor curb appeal, lack of pride and accountability. I brought them in after they started, I think they were eight weeks into the contract and into the mowing season. I brought them in, talked about some concerns we'd had, complaints. And, you know, I looked at them and I said, "Would you bid this contract again?" And they said, "Absolutely." I said, "Would you bid the exact same amount that you had?" "Absolutely not." So they underbid their project. So I don't know if that's part of the issue, that they've realized that they underbid it and they're having to go out and outsource to supplement the income? Because I know they have at least 16 additional residential yards they're doing outside of our contract with the same crew. So I'm not sure they're going to have the ability to continue after this first year. But the common issues were with the frequency of mowing, the quality of work, the weed spraying. We're having to micromanage these individuals. Individual in my office, I mean, he's in contact with them at least five times a week about something that's not correct. They're subcontracting some of the work out. A lot of the pruning, they've subcontracted out because they can't handle it. And they're really just failing to fully execute the contract. Again, that spoke to the residential properties. We've had some property damage out at the jail. They run over some of our vent piping. You know, we had that fixed, and I invoiced them, and we just withheld that from their purchase order for any property damage. Here's some photos. You can see some of the issues are weeding, edging, beds, tracking up sidewalks. The center picture there is really what got this conversation started. So that center picture is out of our Brock Building facility. That morning, from daylight to about 10 o'clock, we had those sidewalks pressure washed. That picture was taken at 12 o'clock, and the mowing crew had left, and we're done for the day. That's how they're leaving our sites. We called to get that corrected. They informed us that, hey, we'll be back out there, try to get out there at lunchtime the next day to correct that issue. Our pressure washers come in, saw that. They were doing drone footage because they'd been posting some pictures on Facebook of the work they were doing. So they had to come back in, redo that sidewalk. Luckily, they didn't charge us any. I told them, I said, "You charge us anything you need to for the labor to come back out and correct that." And I said, "'Cause I'm going to withhold that from the contractors." They come in, did that free of charge because they had pride in their work, and they wanted it to look good when they left. But these are just some pictures. I could take these pictures every two weeks with our current mowing. So the discussion and proposed solution. We can have the expansion of general services, which would include a new grounds division. This would allow us more control and supervision over our properties, also allowing us to do additional services that the current lawn services contract does not provide. Here's what our in-house lawn services grounds would look like during the mowing, growing season. We'd be covering mowing, trimming, sidewalks, equipment maintenance. Grounds would be dumpster corral, parking lots, picking up debris, emptying exterior trash cans, smoke receptacles, weed control. Seasonal would be the leaf removal, mulching, landscaping, hazardous weather cleanup, storm damage that we have on our properties, and then they would also be included in the inclement weather, snow and ice removal. These are the additional services that these employees would be used for outside of just the mowing and cleaning. You're looking at delivery, transport, moving. We get office move requests, furniture disposal, storage, transportation, heavy deliveries, unloading deliveries, events and election services, setting up event space, breaking down, transporting chairs and equipment, and transporting election equipment to and from board of elections to our polling sites during those times. That's something that we currently contract out, or they have volunteers. You know, I've got two, three on, drive the trucks and transport. So I'm pulling my facility guys away from their normal maintenance to do these type of projects that are on this page. And they'd also pick up the other contract services that we're doing, pressure washing, washing general fleet and other duties as assigned. This labor hours breakdown, that you would see those employees, you see a majority of that, almost 80% of that would be toward lawn services. The rest of it would be the ground seasonal and additional duties. And here is the financial breakdown for the next five years of trying to bring that in-house. Year one is a big hit based on, I mean, we've got to start from scratch with new equipment. Once that equipment's in place, it's minimal the first three years after that. So year two, three, and four, you're basically just maintenance, parts, start replacing some mowers and bigger equipment year four. Year five would kind of be a revamp of having a new fleet of mowing. I'm open to any questions you have. This is just going to kick this off for discussion and let you look and see, hey, here's the problems we're having. At this point, moving forward, I'm looking to either move in-house or having to rebid the contract. I'm not confident in moving forward with our current vendor for another year.
I just had one question. In terms of the structure of your staff, I mean, there's a, I mean, you have put together a broad vision of what that group will do. Are you going to, that 6% that's seasonal, are you looking at part-time employees? I'm going to assume crew leader and those three will be full-time. I mean, what's your thoughts there? I mean, it looked like you had quite a bit.
The number based there that you see in the staff, year one through year five, those are four full-time. I have played with the numbers of doing one part-time seasonal just during the mowing season. That would be possible. You know, in talking with our past vendor, which in doing this, rebidding for 15 years, we had a unicorn-type service. I know most of y'all know the crew we had. They were doing above and beyond the duties that we were paying for. And now you get, when they went out of business and we had to bid it out, you realize we had a bargain. So talking with Cutco, he said, "You can manage it with three employees." He said, "But during the mowing season," he said, "it takes four." The Tech One could be a part-time seasonal, but, you know, the mowing season's really going to run from March to October.
Well, my, I was saying on top of those four.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No, we could drop back and possibly do a part-time of that ground Tech One, have three full-time year-round. I don't think we need five.
And so you're, just in your experience with the bidding process and what you saw. Now, we know the current folks, based on what you're telling us, have not been able to handle the job because they underbid the project. But in terms of the annual cost, as we look out, those dollars, not first-year cost, those dollars are within reason in terms of what you're seeing as what would be an adequate bid, not counting all the other stuff you're doing with them, which...
Year two, year three, year four, outside of the new equipment purchase, you're looking at a, almost apples for apples of what a good mowing service could provide. But then again, you're just getting mowing, no additional services. I spoke to two of the larger bids that came in out of those 11, and, because I wondered, like, why are you so high? Like, you had these and then there are outliers, and they said, "Well, we know what it takes, and we're having to add a whole new crew with all new equipment." So it's in line, year two, year three, year four, what we would expect to see bidding. But then again, that's just for mowing, weeding, and blowing.
Other questions?
I think you've pretty much answered it, but these, this numbers would be fairly commensurate with what a bid would be, even if there's a little bit of difference. It's not a lot. And I just like, you comment in the general, I like the idea. I like, I've liked it from the start. I think one of the biggest things you can't capture is pride and curb appeal and all those things. And that's what I'd like to see, because, you know, I mean, people come to our buildings and they don't want to see junk. They don't, you know, and there could be things they work on, like reseeding and all those kind of things. I mean, you know, I used to do landscaping some, but I mean, I want the buildings to look nice. They don't have to be, you know, we don't have to have it look like we've got out there, got an exotic garden somewhere. But I mean, I think people like to see the grass and not see mud and not walk across grass and then get it baked into the concrete where the pressure washing basically only looks as half as it did six hours ago. So I just think it's, I think this is all part of tied into the vision of what I see, even with cleaning and everything else. It's kind of like a reset, and it's about the service and the look. It's not just about the dollars.
Your variable cost to operate all this equipment, is that, that's not up there, is it?
You're talking about maintenance, parts, fuel?
Yeah, parts, fuel.
Yeah, and that's what you're really seeing in year two. And year, year two is basically your parts, maintenance, and fuel. Year three, you know, we're having to replace small handheld items, plus the maintenance costs. Yeah, we're capturing that as well.
Let me ask this question, based on something I just thought of. Like, if you had somebody that contracted with you, but then you saw where you needed to reseed an area or you needed to do something to make it look better, that's, some of that's not built in. I mean, is all that built into the contract, or is that kind of like a...
It's an additional service.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing is, you know, if someone calls, you know, at the government center, they're having an important meeting that week. You know, we're, you know, we've had a couple rains, you know, we're behind. You know, we've been maintenance equipment. We haven't been able to mow. Well, the government center's not till Friday. They have a meeting on Wednesday in-house. We're able to say, "Hey, we're going to go up there, and we're going to take care of this, and we'll get back on our schedule." Now, we can't do that. I mean, I can make the suggestion, but they're sticking to their script, or they're handling their residential clients right now. So we've got the freedom to move, be down at the park before our concerts, be down there before Little League football, make sure the park's in good shape, and then get back on our schedule.
That's what I was going to ask you, that, the turf fields at the Little League Park, that's kind of a unique maintenance. And so you're including...
No, so, you know, Paul's got part maintenance staff that handle the turf field.
Okay.
And this does not include the civic green or the ball field, because those are sodded Bermuda. That requires a real mower. There's no reason for us to purchase a real mower to do two sites. Paul contracts that out through a local vendor that just handles those two areas. And that's being done now. That's not in our current contract either.
But I like the fact that it would give you the discretion, like, when I have seen companies come out and mow, if it had rained three inches the day before, to say, "Maybe we ought to not mow that today and track up everything." Because I see that constantly happen when I'm going around.
And that's a large issue down at the park, because it's so, it's so big. You know, if you get behind down there at the park and it's wet, like, if you went down there to mow today, you're going to track up sidewalks. You know, we'd be able to lay that over till tomorrow and go do that since we can adjust our schedules.
Or I'll give you a great example. During senior games, when I volunteered to do bocce ball, we could have coordinated our own crew so that while we're doing bocce ball, the mowers were actually mowing while we were doing the event. Not only do you have them doing it while you're outside, they weren't even doing the best of jobs. We could have coordinated that in-house a little bit better. So that's one perk of, if we decide to go with the in-house route. So when we have events, we have staff that can talk to each other and plan this out so that we're not mowing during an event.
Just curious, that Kubota, is that just a rubber tire tractor with a loader?
Yeah, that's going to be a small, probably 25, 30-horse tractor for mulching. Used, you know, you got to get the mulching, more than likely, we'd dump that on-site at the park. The park alone takes 200 yards of mulch. So that's two tractor trailer loads of mulch. Throughout the rest of the county, we'd probably be doing 250 to 300 yards of mulch. So we'd dump it on that one site, load it, take it, use a tractor to put it out. And just for reference, you take the park, the government center, Dr. Slate Campus, Sparks Road, and the jail. Those are longer, 22 acres of mowing. Countywide, we're at 34 acres of mowing, and you've got all the additional edging, weeding, and blowing of all the beds and sidewalks. So it's a large contract.
They'll stay busy.
Yeah, they'll stay busy.
Brad, what's our timeline on this?
So the timeline would be if, you know, if we're looking to bring it in-house, you know, I would need employees, staffing, and mowers ready to go in March. You know, if we get an early spring, we could be mowing early March. So if we're looking to bring it in-house, I would, I would need those in place, March 1. Looking back of hiring process of getting four individuals or three, you know, probably those jobs need to be posted at the end of the calendar year.
What are we paying now? What was the contract for this year?
So we've got, contract is for mowing, weeding, blowing, and leaf pickup, which I was an ad alternate. So I think we're, I don't want to give you exactly, $102,000 is roughly the total we're paying right now for those services.
You said $102?
$102.
What about the, what about the other?
So I've got an additional, it varies. I went back and looked two or three years for the pressure washing, the pruning and all that stuff. It ranges from $75,000 to $100,000 a year, just those additional services.
But the $102, you got to put the footnote. It's not sufficient.
Yeah.
Like, if you'd have picked a better bidder, you'd have been up at least closer to $175, 200 or something, you know what I mean?
I would say you're in the 240 to 275 range for an adequate contracted vendor service.
Now, in terms of the ETA, Brad, when are you comfortable? When do you need us in, so you'd have a secure comfort level with what you're doing here? When do you need action from us, just in your thoughts?
Discussion and anything to move forward, I would be comfortable if, you know, if I had something by November. That way, either, I'm either drafting up a new RFQ for vendor services to do this, or we're looking, I've got, I've got job descriptions now, but be getting those in place, getting them approved, getting them posted, bringing them in. So by November, latest, the December meeting, since it's early. But by the end of the calendar year, we need to know what we're doing come January 1.
Brad, do you already have a place to store all the equipment that you're talking about, or is that something that'd have to be in addition?
We do have limited storage right now. You know, it would be a situation right now where you'd have to unhook the trailers, get them in a bay every afternoon, every morning. We don't have sufficient space to leave them hooked up, or secured space to leave them hooked up, everything on the truck, on the trailer, out open. Additional space could be needed, but, you know, moving forward, as this is a crawling step to walking, we have limited space that it could be provided to hold that now.
Well, we're looking at some options on that, so hopefully, by the time you're to that point, we'll have some answers to that.
So Brad, I will say, I appreciate you doing all this work, and honestly, I would like to see this same attitude put forth to the cleaning contract that whenever it's to be looked at again, because this is, this attitude towards this is the same attitude I feel like we should have towards that cleaning concept. So give you a little time to work on it.
No problem.
Anything else?
Yeah, I like it. And one more anecdotal thing, my mom lost her really good mower, which was me. And now she has somebody else do it, and it's the quality difference. The turnover you see within these people's businesses, it might be mowed good for one month, and then there's a different group of people, or somebody leaves to take another job. So I mean, it's just, just going to get a better, more consistent product, and I think that's part of the selling point.
All right.
More accountability.
Brian, did you have anything you needed to?
Nope, I think, I think you guys asked all the questions that I would've asked of you, so I think we're good unless you all have any more.
And we just direct y- you guys, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it when we have our meeting in terms of setting up the agenda and getting this so we can move fo- move forward. All right, thanks Brad. John, come on up here, uh, and talk to us about the new GIS.
So this is gonna be somewhat of a lightning round. I'm gonna let Danny drive. So this is Danny Smith, our GIS analyst. And, um, I'd like to just, I take a moment to recognize staff that helped put this together for us. They did a phenomenal job in a very short timeframe, which we did not expect. Um, we, I'm gonna move over so the mic can pick it up.
Absolutely.
Um, and we, um, I say we, staff did a phenomenal job of, of, of doing that. So, um, Danny Smith, Tony Scarlett on our staff worked with our vendor to get this working. We had spent about six or eight months prior to figuring out kinda what we wanted. And we thought we had another six to nine months to, to build it and get it ready and that wasn't the case. So they took really about a year project and squished it into, uh, three months, which was a monumental task. And that just shows the quality of the folks that we have on staff and their ability to, to spin things around pretty quick. So, um, first of all, I wanna show you how to get to the site. So we're directing people to go to the county website and if you'll back up just to the main page here, just to the main website. Um, so we have a GIS icon, scroll down a little bit, it's the ne- next to last one on the right. And when you click on that, it'll take it to, take you to the GIS page. And we've provided some information for, uh, visitors to let them know that the old site is going away as of December first. The new site will be the one that they wanna bookmark and go to, um, to make sure that they have their personal favorites updated and they can get to what they need to. We feel like this new site has a much better look and feel to it. We've had very positive feedback, um, just informally talking to folks that are using it. Um, it's already open, it's, it's out there and, and ready to use. Um, so we're trying to get people to use that site and, and become familiar with it. So when you click on the, uh, the link, it takes you to a web GIS. Now, we are hosting this internally, so our prior RockMap system was hosted by a vendor. And as Brad sort of described, you're, you're somewhat limited by what the vendor can do. Um, some advantages of hosting this internally is one, the data is more current. So the prior site, we had to wait about a week to get those updates applied. And if there were errors with them or problems with them, it would take two or three days. Now we have staff, um, that can support this, uh, which we did not have prior to. And, um, they're able to actually reflect those updates, whether it's tax parcel maps, whether it's addresses, anything related to other data sets that we have out there. So it's a much quicker turnaround and that's better customer service to the public, so they actually have access to, to more, um, timely data. So this is the site itself and it's laid out, um, in a much better orientation. Um, we've got some search capabilities on the left-hand side. There's a layers, um, tab if you wanna click on that. And one of the big things that was a, a push for, for me, that I felt like the citizens were not able to take advantage of, was we have a lot of older aerial imagery, uh, data sets. So the aerial imagery is what's provided by the state through the state nine-one-one funds. And we have, um, imagery all the way back to two thousand and four. Well, RockMaps wanted to charge us extra to do that, but we've been able to bring that in-house, create those data sets and put them on there. So you can actually turn on the different, um, layers, whether you wanna look at twenty-ten, two thousand and four, twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-two, whatever it is that you wanna look at, and you can see change over time where we did not have that capability before. Now, Google has some features similar to that, um, but it's not the same high-quality imagery that the state provides to us through that state nine-one-one fund. So that's, that's the big feature that, uh, I wanted to point out. Besides the more timely, uh, data updates as well. So, um, if you go into the site and just, you can just zoom into an area, um, we have a toolbar across the top. You can also use, if you have a, a rolling wheel on your mouse, um, you can draw a square and it'll zoom in. Or you can, um, just roll that wheel on your mouse and it'll zoom in on the map. We've got aerial imagery, we've got streets, addresses, things like that. And, uh, when you pick on a particular parcel, so he's just clicking through some different, um, age sets of aerial imagery that we have on there. And you can see there is differences in the color and tone quality of that imagery. That has to do with the technology they use to collect that and some of the correction that goes on behind that. This is a nice feature, when you pick a parcel, it kinda highlights it, so you don't have to kinda guess which one that you're looking at. Um, searching, so if you're gonna search, let's say, uh, this location. Uh, we feel like the capabilities, the search capabilities are, are much more robust. Uh, it's much friendlier for the folks to use and it zooms right into the map, uh, without having to do a lot of extra looking around or, or additional searching and, and things like that. As I mentioned, the, the feedback has been very positive. Uh, users have told us that it's easier to use the toolbars, it's easier to find the information that you need. And, uh, we've reformatted the layout of the information. So you get the basics on the left-hand side, but you can also click on the property card, which we've always had. And that takes us to the data that the tax office provides, which shows the basic property information related to the ownership, value, square footage and things like that. So we are promoting this site through a number of methods. Wendy Horn is helping us with some press releases. Uh, we've also sent out notifications through the county website and we're doing that once a month. Um, we're gonna leave, uh, those notifications out there so folks will know. We wanna get as many folks using the new site as possible, so that transition, you know, you have muscle memory, you're used to clicking on the same thing all the time. Uh, we want them to update their bookmarks, make sure they can go to the new site and get the information that they need. Um, so we're also doing that through Facebook postings. Wendy Horn is helping us with that. Uh, we've got a press release, we have a description, uh, which kinda shows what the site looks like. And then also tells us, uh, or tells the user, hey, update your bookmarks, you wanna make sure and, that you can get to the new site cause the old site is gonna be turned off December the first. Uh, we just don't wanna have two sites up and running at the same time. It just, it gets confusing for the users out there. Um, I do wanna put a plug in for GIS, it's the most visited set of webpages on the county website. So it gets a lot of traffic, a lot of people use this, whether it's realtors, surveyors, attorneys, paralegals or the general public. Uh, it gets a lot of traffic, I'd say probably in about a two to one ratio. Land records with registered deeds is, is a very high visited page as well as it's a tax. Um, we got revale coming up, so we expect this site is gonna have a lot of visits and a lot of traffic. Um, and we're keeping, we're gonna stay on top of it. So this was just a, a real quick explanation of what we're doing, how we're going about, um, making this available to the public. And just to see if you had any questions or suggestions on, uh, how we can do a better job. So, uh, that was, I think that was five minutes. Brian promised, uh, Brian commended me to five minutes.
Oh my goodness, you did great, you did great. So I have just a logistical dislayment's question. So when you go in and you type in the name, Jones, whatever, the address, the map automatically comes up?
So it depends on how many results come up. So if you just use like Jones.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a number of Joneses. When you pick the one.
The address.
That address or that parcel record, it's gonna zoom to that.
And it will come up with the, the map?
Correct. So that's an example right there. He just typed in a name.
Yeah.
It comes right to the parcel that you're looking for. And you can also zoom out and see all of the records associated with that search criteria. So it might not be the one that you're looking for. Maybe you want, it, you know, it took you to the one in the southeastern part of the county and you want something north of I forty, so you can use those search tool, search tools or the pan and zoom and, you know, click around the map. So it's very similar to what we have with RockMaps, it's just easier to use. So we feel like this has been a big improvement and again, I can't give enough credit to staff and the time that they spent on this. It was a, uh, really a phenomenal effort to make this happen in a very short timeframe, really unexpected, uh, from, from our current vendor, our former vendor, um, to, to put this on us. But, uh, staff was able to get it done quickly and that just shows the expertise and quality of, of the workforce that we have here.
Selfish question, how do you do the, a joiner type thing with this now? Like I used to always do the little identification button on the old one and. Yeah, do one of those, cause.
So there's a link, um, right there where it says find the joiners.
Okay.
And it'll pick all the parcels that touch that. Nothing across the road, cause it's obviously not, you know, adjacent to it, there's a road in the way, but.
So you gotta use that. You, it's not like another, it's not like you're searching for a tool to get that.
No, we try to focus on, go ahead Danny.
Oh yeah, just, uh, sort of, uh, one-step solutions.
Yeah, that's good.
Make, make it easier, make it, uh, more intuitive, uh, make it better experience.
That was operator era when I was doing it.
Well, you know, technology is, is tricky sometimes. We try to meet that eighty to eighty-five percent, you know, satisfaction, but sometimes there's always gonna be a little thing in there that, you know, we don't think about and so we wanna, you know, we wanna hear about it and, and see what we can do to improve that.
Yeah, we got a complicated survey going on at Moms and it's like the legal descriptions talk about trees, like from the late eighteen nineties.
The oak tree that.
Yeah, the tree that's not there now and then all that stuff, so we don't have it and like got, I don't know, probably for that property, maybe fifteen a jo- twelve or fifteen a joiners, so we're having to kinda deduce it, but anyway.
Yeah, and we, and we get those questions, so what we do is refer them to surveyors. Cause we're not qualified surveyors, we're not licensed and so we don't wanna mislead folks and think in the, you know, we can provide those answers to them. So we, we, we get, occasionally get those questions about, you know, can, can the county survey my property? I had one of those the other day and I'm like, so I called the gentleman back and I said, no, we, we're not allowed to. The last county surveyor was I think in nineteen seventy-two or sometime along in there and they got rid of those positions, so.
So you're updating this real time, so every day the clerk of registered deeds gets a update that gets uploaded to the?
Well, that's a different, uh, topic. So when I say real time, it's real time as far as when the mapping actually occurs. So if a deed, let's say a deed was recorded on a Monday, there may be a few days for the tax office to receive that information. Then they have to determine what does that actually represent and then they go about mapping it. Uh, the mapping may take, uh, a day to post and actually apply those edits. And once those edits are actually applied, then it's available on the site. So there is always gonna be some lag time between something getting recorded and actually getting mapped. Because we, some, as Brad, as, uh, Commissioner Shov mentioned, sometimes there's discrepancies in the, you know, the, um, descriptions. And we wanna make sure that, uh, the tax office, you know, is, they're, they're doing their good, uh, good work to make sure it's mapped correctly.
And so in your thoughts, I think you mentioned this earlier, under the old, um, rock system, you're thinking this is gonna speed it up a week, ten days, just based on what you had to do?
Correct. And we had to do a lot of work to prepare that data to go out. That's gonna save us, you know, a lot of time in maintaining that. Um, it typically, we would send updates each Sunday, they would apply the updates on Monday and then the users would typically see it on Tuesday. So if a, a parcel was mapped, let's say on, on a Friday, uh, it would get packaged up and sent, but it would be like another week before it actually was posted online. This is connecting to our real live data set that we're editing on an ongoing basis. So it takes out a lot of that delay and, and making that information available.
That's great. So the only time involved really would be the time that like the tax office or literally your people or the different staffs doing their work to make it that way, not the additional.
That's correct. So let's say there was a subdivision, um, twenty lot subdivision, that plat would have to get recorded. The tax office would need to go in and, and do their basic, you know, mapping information and then decide, you know, how they wanna parcel that out and make sure that it meets their mapping standards. And so we're not talking about that process, we're talking about when we actually put an address on the map or post an edit for that, that's when those become, uh, live updates. And for, uh, of course, any technical questions about the app, um, we provided a help document as well for people to, uh, interact with and troubleshoot, or they can just, uh, contact the GIS office. So that's a very robust document. Um, it's a lot of information and it covers all the basics of how to use the site. That was something our vendor had helped us, uh, had, had an example of and Danny went through and updated that and to make sure it reflected our local information. So that's a lot better information than we've had before. We also have links across the top, so if they wanna reach the tax office, they can. We can add additional links to that, so that takes them, that link took them to tax administration. So we have much more flexibility now to change the way the site works and the look and feel. And we ha- we do have vendor support for that and that's, uh, been a very positive relationship with the, the company, it's called Avignon. And, uh, we've worked with, it was a prior company before, but they've kinda merged, but we've had a very good relationship with them. So we're, we're very pleased with the outcome.
Very good.
Well, thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all for all your hard work on that. That's great.
Appreciate you.
And thank you again because this is what, Technology Solutions or IT Week?
Week, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So a good time in there, right?
There you go. And John's birthday week.
Well, we don't talk about that. We, we do thank you for all the support that you give us through the funding and the tools to do our job and support for staff. So we appreciate the opportunity to provide these services to, to you all and the public, so thank you for that.
Thanks guys. All right, Jamin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy Thursday. Uh, so this morning, uh, I've been given the opportunity to kinda, uh, give you the, a bird's eye view of what, uh, a reappraisal process, what we go through to, uh, to get us ready for January one of twenty twenty-five. Uh, my hope is, uh, that after this presentation, you have a better understanding. So, you know, questions always seem to arise in passing of the citizens of the county. Hopefully you'll be able to answer maybe any of the questions that they throw at you, so. Um, so with that, uh, you know, the two main questions that we always kinda get hit with, uh, just to give you some background, is what is a reappraisal and why do we do it? Okay, why do we have to do it? So reappraisal, uh, as I mentioned, I believe, uh, the last meeting, uh, it's the process of updating values for every parcel, uh, of real property, which includes land, buildings and the outbuildings. What it does not include is things like boats, airplanes, uh, utility trailers, mobile homes, uh, in some cases. Those are personal property items. They pretty much get reevaluated yearly. So it's the real property that we do every four years. Uh, the why, uh, we do it, um, it's not because we want to, it's actually mandated by, uh, North Carolina general statute. Uh, the statute requires that all one hundred counties across the state, uh, reappraise property at least once every eight years. Now subsection three allows for counties to advance that. And I don't know, uh, what timeframe it was and maybe even some of you were, uh, involved, but, uh, Davie County Commissioners, uh, chose to advance that, uh, and did a resolution to do a reevaluation every four years. And that's the cycle that we're in currently, so. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to point out, uh, you know, mo- a lot of people say, you know, reevaluation is just a way to get more money. That's, that's not why we do, that's not the main purpose of a reevaluation or a reappraisal. Um, you know, the main purpose is to make sure we show equity across all the properties throughout the county. Um, an analogy I, I would try to use with you is, uh, let's say three friends went to get lunch, okay? One gets a hot dog, one gets a steak, one gets caviar. But when the bill comes to the table, if they split it three equal ways, is that fair? Probably not. You know, the guy that bought the hot dog is getting the short end of the stick. The guy that bought the caviar, he's probably loving it, right? Same way with property. Uh, we want to make sure that everybody's paying their fair share of the bill. Okay, so that's why the re- reappraisals, uh, need to take place.
Could've been a foot long.
Yes. Yes.
Super doll.
Uh, so a couple of the other questions is, you know, when does this take place? Um, and where does it, um, take place? So the when, revaluation is not a fly-by-the-night, uh, process. Uh, January one of twenty twenty-five is our revale, um, for this current. Uh, January one of twenty twenty-five is our revow, um, for this current year, or the, the current revow coming up. Believe it or not, January second, we will actually start for the twenty-nine revow, because we're always having sales coming in from day one. Uh, so the where do we start, or the when would be January one, where do we start is with our sales. Our sales is the, the foundation of the reappraisal. Uh, without good data or without good sales, um, you don't know which way to go, right? So the first thing we do is build a sales file. Uh, we'll start that, like I said, as soon as the first sale comes through, uh, the register of deeds. Uh, we, as new neighborhoods are created, we will, uh, delineate, uh, neighborhoods. Right now, we're up to about two hundred and nineteen neighborhoods. Um, and then, you know, somewhere in the future, usually about a year to a year and a half, we'll start analyzing these sales. I mean, there's no use in to do it, to do it right out of the gate. We're just gonna build that file first. Uh, so about a year, year and a half, we'll start analyzing the sales to see where we stand. Um, we are governed, or, yeah, that's a good word. We are, um, governed by certain standards from the International Association of Assessing Officers, or IAAO for short. If you notice, we have a median ratio that we have to pursue, um, coefficient of dispersion, and some price-related differentials. Uh, the main one that we try to, well, we focus on all three, but the main one that we, we strive for is that median ratio. Uh, it need, the target is one, or one point oh. Um, if, if we reach that number, then we know, um, that we're pretty equitable acro- across the whole county. Kinda give you a couple of mock situations. I didn't get them in a slide, but, uh, for instance, let's take neighborhood A, right? Uh, right now, if I ran a sales report, let's say we have thirty-five properties or thirty-five homes in this neighborhood. We've got fifteen sales. If I do the, um, reports, we find out that our median ratio is a hundred and five, or one point oh five. Um, if you already noticed, that's on the upper end. While we're still okay, our target is that one point oh. Um, coefficient, our C O D is thirteen point six, price-related, our P R D is a one point oh two. So technically, we're okay, but we're on the higher end. So what do we do, right? Well, the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna review those properties in that neighborhood, especially, um, to make sure that they are as accurate as possible. You know, people make changes all the time. You know, we currently could have an asbestos shingle as the roof material. You know, a year or two ago, they decided to put a metal roof on it, okay? So we have to review those properties to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. Um, so once we've got the properties, um, assessed correctly, uh, we have to make some changes to get us from one point oh five to that one point oh, which means with this neighborhood, values are more than likely, or the values are gonna go down, right? So some of the changes that we can make, or common changes that affect the whole neighborhood, it could be quality, could be design, uh, could be the effective age. So once we make those changes, uh, we run a new report, and we still have the fifteen sales, but now our median ratio is a ninety-nine point nine six. Not quite the one point oh, but still, um, it's right at it. So that's how we, we are mass appraisers. We are not fee appraisers. Fee appraisers look at one property and one property only, and they compare it to comparable light properties. When we do appraisal, it is the whole. So if a neighborhood has fifty homes, and it's got fifty sa- or fifteen sales, that whole neighborhood is changed based on those fifteen sales. Some people may say that's not right. Some people, you know, you're gonna have your groups that disagree and agree. Uh, but that's, um, that is mass appraisal, okay? Uh, another, let's say neighborhood B, um, just to kinda give you another scenario. You know, twenty-five home sites, five sales, the median ration, or median ratio is eighty-seven point six five. So that automatically tells me, as an appraiser, I'm on the low end of those values. Those values of that neighborhood need to increase. So again, we make some changes, go back, rerun our reports, and we get it to, let's just say, a hundred point oh two. Well, um, we've done what, um, is expected of us in a reappraisal situation. One of the things to, uh, remember, um, when it comes to, or when you look at those two scenarios, a couple of things to take, um, notice of. One is assessed values may go up, assessed values may go down, or they may stay almost the same. Depends on what the market is doing for that, um, particular neighborhood, okay? Um, so not all neighborhoods go up. That's the good news. Um, if there is a, some si- or silver lining to a reappraisal. Let's see. So once we have our neighborhoods, um, where we need to, uh, need them to be, um, then that allows us to start looking at our rates also, okay? So we, rates, we can kinda, rates are, I'm just back up a minute. Our rates are, um, part of the schedule of values, okay? So we have to get the rates, uh, where they need to be. Uh, one of the things that we do is, you know, we've talked to contractors, uh, we look at Marshall and Swift, um, uh, and we ju- you know, do as much research as we can to make sure that our rates are where they need to be. We will, um, you know, we've talked to suppliers. And what we do is we'll plug those in, re- uh, run the reports, and, you know, again, see what we need to do. We're always fine tuning. You know, what we do in November may not necessarily work in December, because we're always, updating our numbers or, uh, the system. So once we get on to this, uh, we put, we test the values, we test the rates, um, and as I've got, you know, we do adjust, and then we'll finally nail it down to, um, those values or those rates that we believe will work, and that's where we're at now. Um, you know, I just submitted, just talking about the scheduled values, just submitted the schedule of values, uh, the third of this month, I believe it was. Um, currently, the ad is in the paper. I think today is the third week. It will be in the paper again next week for a total of four consecutive weeks. Uh, when we come back, October the seventh, I believe it is, it'll be the public hearing for the, the schedule of values. Uh, at, from there, uh, the November meeting will be the approval. And then once it's approved, uh, by you, as the commissioners, uh, citizens have thirty days to appeal it. Uh, they can appeal to what's called the Property Tax Commission, which is up in Raleigh. Um, so thirty days after the approval, it's gonna put us somewhere around that December seventh, December eighth timeframe. After that, the schedule of values or, um, what we will use for the next four years.
Jamin, are you saying appeal the actual schedule of value? Okay, not their.
Their individual.
Individual, okay. That's what I thought.
Yes, sir. Uh, so, uh, kinda where are we at now? You know, we've gone through, now that we've come so far, we're pretty much in a, a review process. Uh, you know, we're looking for, uh, anything inconsistencies, uh, anomalies. Uh, we're always having new sales come in. I mean, we will have, it's not uncommon to have a, a mad dash of sales December thirtieth or thirty-first, the end of the year. Um, so we'll have all of those that we have to go through and, uh, see if they are qualified or disqualified sales. And we're always reviewing our ratios. Like I said, what worked yesterday may not work today. Um, and that's pretty much where we're at now, uh, in the process of the reappraisal. Notice and appeals is pretty much the last step of, uh, the reappraisal process. The notices, uh, right now, we're thinking end of January, first of February. Reason being is we have to wait until those, um, you know, we still have land splits, we might have combinations, we have tra- or de-transfers. We still have all of that coming in in December. So, um, we have to make sure all loose ends have been tied up, okay? So that's why we'll, depending on, uh, how long it takes us to, to button up all those loose ends, we're hoping the end of January will be the, uh, a true measurement. Appeals, um, when the notices go out, uh, the notice is actually the appeal form. Um, so when the notice goes out from that timeframe until the Board of Equalization and Review adjourns, that's the appeal timeline. Uh, anything beyond, when the board adjourns, no more appeals are allowed for this year. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not working some appeals, because it's, as long as a taxpayer has got the appeal in before then, we will work it, um, until we get them all done. I know when I was in Durham, uh, the last revow for them was like twenty nineteen. It took almost a full year to work through all the appeals, uh, in Durham, but, uh, it's a large city and had a lot of appeals, so. Uh, there will be instructions, um, on the, uh, notice to, you know, instruct the, the citizen how to appeal, if they choose to appeal. Uh, and you know, appeals are their rights. Um, uh, they have the right to appeal if they disagree with their, uh, or if they think things is not like they should be. Um, some of the things, trying to give you some valid reasons and, and some invalid reasons. You know, a va- a, a good reason to appeal, uh, the market value that we have is, uh, substantially exceeds the actual market value. You know, again, we are mass appraisers. So when we increase a whole neighborhood, there might be one or two houses that, uh, maybe went up too much. You know, it may be more than what the market value really is. Uh, but we, we don't single anybody out. We bring them all up, or we take them all down together as a whole. Uh, so the market value may exceed. Um, it may be inconsistent with similar properties. Or it may just be, and this is usually the biggest one, it may be that the information we have on the tax card is not accurate. You know, John and Danny was talking about the GIS. The GIS is a great tool. It gives you the chance to see your property, and then it also get, now that they've gotten linked to the tax site or, uh, website, uh, you can pull up your tax card and make sure it's accurate. Um, you know, we may have four bedrooms, but it's only three. We may have three baths, but it's only a one and a half, uh, the square footage. You know, there's things that can be wrong that does affect that value. So that's one of the biggest reasons that, um, appeals come into play is, uh, you know, we do have some information that needs correcting. Some invalid reasons to appeal, uh, you know, I, I, I get where people are coming from, but when they call and say, you know, it's just too mu- it went up too much, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, the market's telling me that we're, where we need to be, so. Um, they may say that it's more than the insurance value. Or the biggest one, I think, a lot of times we hear is, well, uh, nobody abides for that, you know? Um, well, yeah, but those are invalid reasons.
Those, those are, those are invalid in your mind, but that, you do, you don't restrict that person from appealing.
No, sir. They can appeal.
Okay, alright, okay.
Um, and the good thing is, is we do have, uh, a system this year, um, it's called Comper. Uh, we can put in a subject property into the, uh, the software, and what it does is it brings to the surface, like homes in that neighborhood of the subject property, and so it, it, uh, helps us narrow down. It almost turns us into a fee appraiser, cause it makes adjustments based on the differences between the comps and the subject property, and it gives us a real good value of what the house, uh, should be. And, uh, so we've got that, um, kinda in our hip pockets for, uh, uh, when the appeals start, and it's something that we can show the homeowner. It's like, you know, based on these comps, um, we think we got it right, or based on these comps, we need to do some adjustments, so. Uh, but yes, sir, we will not deny anybody, uh, the right to appeal based on just what they feel, so. This is a, a Gantt chart, uh, that I put together, uh, to kinda give you a better view of how things would go or look. Uh, you know, across the left-hand side or the task, um, you know, the reappraisal, as I said, it pretty much will start, uh, the first day of the year. Uh, in this case, I'm running, or I'm based it on the upcoming revow, so. You know, January of twenty-one to December of twenty-four, that's a four-year period, so we're always doing something, uh, that affects reappraisal. Uh, the measuring list is a task that's mandated by, uh, the Department of Revenue. Depending on where your numbers are, at any given time, they can mandate us to do a full measuring list or maybe a partial measuring list. What that means is, uh, we have to put boots on the ground. We're, we're gonna be in the field pulling tape to verify that our information is accurate. Uh, excuse me, analyzing the sales, uh, you know, building the schedule of value, land pricing, um, data entry, you know, these tasks, um, all the way up to the appeals. And as you can see on the bottom, the, the bar chart kinda gives you a visual of, uh, look. You know, right now, we are in the, um, adoption of the schedule of values, and we're also reviewing kinda at the same time. Um, notices will go out, and then we will have the appeals, uh, timeframe. Uh, usually, when the notice, if the notices go out end of January, the Board of E and R usually adjourns the first Monday in May. So that's how long the, uh, the timeframe will be to appeal.
Question.
I'm sorry, sir?
Why would the North Carolina Department of Revenue insist on a measuring list? Why would that occur?
It's because our, they kinda regulate a lot of the things we do. Um, they have seen that our numbers, well, any county's numbers are way outside of the desired outcome. So for instance, you know, our target is that one point oh. Uh, you know, if you get into the point sixes, point fives, point, maybe even the point sevens, um, or as they, I think it's once or twice a year, we actually also have to, um, do a sample size of a measuring list, uh, that could dictate that we're outside of what they're regulating or requiring. Um, it doesn't happen often. I've never been involved with one. Most counties just choose to do it their own selves without D O R becoming a part of the picture, so. But that would be the reason, is the numbers are just too far outside of the desired results. Um, just to kinda give you a quick, some quick statistics with the sales. Uh, you know, since January one of, uh, twenty-one, countywide, we've had about six hundred and fifty vacant sales. We've had about twenty-three hundred, uh, improved sales. Uh, if you break those down, Culmee's had three vacant, eighty-six improved, uh, Moxville's had eighty-eight vacant, four hundred and eighty-four improved, uh, Bermuda Run had about sixteen vacant and three hundred and sixty-one improved sales. As compared to the twenty-twenty, or excuse me, as compared to the, uh, yeah, the twenty-twenty-one revow, uh, we have increased sales since then, so. If you break the improved, um, countywide, the twenty-three hundred, if you break that down, uh, we're averaging about four. we're averaging about 48 sales a month. So the appraisers stay pretty busy, making sure that these sales are looked at, reviewed, and qualified or not, so.
When you're saying improved and vacant and all that, you're not, that's not including like new, like a new development or something like that?
If, yeah, when I'm saying vacant, that's pretty much what it is. It's a vacant piece of property. There's no improvements. Now, when I say improved, it has a house on it. And until, let's say they aren't, there is a house that's under construction, they finish it, they sell it. Well, until that happens, it's not an improved sale. You know, it has to sell for us.
Does the improved sale go in even with new, new building? Does that fall under, I mean, I didn't know if there was a subcategory for like a new subdivision versus something that was improved? You don't mean remodeled, improved, or that kind of thing?
Right, yeah. New subdivisions, that's why we tried to delineate the subdivisions. You know, we don't want, we don't want individual subdivisions affecting other subdivisions. You know, they're all kind of unique in their own way. Different developers or different builders build different style houses, you know? So we separate them, give them unique identification numbers. So when we do reporting, you know, we can pull only properties that's associated with that neighborhood. These numbers that I just give you is as a whole, so there's no separation in these numbers. It's countywide. Let's see. And with that, I know that's a quick words I view, but again, my hope was just to acknowledge, you know, if in passing somebody had a question, maybe it would help you answer. Any questions, feel free to throw them my way, so.
I do have a question, if you don't mind. Bearing in mind that even in the same neighborhoods, no two houses are exactly alike. How do you allow for the differences in these houses as far as one that's obviously more expensive than the other that's two doors down from it? How do you differentiate there? You don't just use a cookie cutter value to go across both houses, I'm sure.
No, sir, it depends on, like, now, if they're both, let's say, for instance, they're both just ranch-style houses. The difference is, is going to be some of the building characteristic, or some of the building materials. You know, one house may have linoleum flooring, the other one may have hardwoods. One may have the metal roof, one may have the shingles. So those differences there do affect value. A metal roof is not the same rate as a shingled roof. Hardwood floors is more expensive than linoleum. So those factors will adjust those values a little bit. But overall, they're looked at the same because they're both just ranch-style houses. Now, if I had a story and a half or two-story, let's say, for instance, the two-story house is 2,500 square feet. My ranch house is 2,500 square feet. Believe it or not, they're not going to be the same value. The two-story is going to be cheaper because it's cheaper to build up and it is out. So the value of that, even though they're both the same square footage, that two-story house would be a little bit less on the value side.
And how do you know what is inside each of these houses?
If we don't get to them in new construction, we try our best to use all the tools possible. And one of those tools is if a house sells, a lot of times you can find it online. And it will, the realtor has access to inside the house. So the realtor will put pictures out there that we can utilize to try to make sure we're as accurate as possible. If we can't get to the inside of it, you know, if we're out there reviewing the property, we knock on the door. If someone answers, it gives us the opportunity to ask questions. If nobody answers the door, we have little door hangers that we leave. The appraiser will put their card in there. And that way, the homeowner, whenever they get back, they know that we've visited. And they're more than welcome to call us. And if we've got questions, we can get them answered that way, so. New construction is the best way. You know, we're on site measuring those houses and we get to see inside and outside. Old houses, it's just, we get it when we can and how we can.
Can I follow up? Richard, were you?
Certainly.
In terms of the median that you talked about with communities. For example, in Oak Valley, there are, there are million-dollar homes and there are not million-dollar homes. There's different levels. When you take those sales, are you painting them with a broad brush in terms of, let's just say, they had 25 sales in the higher end of Bermuda, of Oak Valley. Are you taking and blanketing that over the whole development? I don't know if that question makes any sense, but in terms of where you're developing that median?
Right. If we can't divide it up any further, we may, some of the larger neighborhoods, I like to say we, we may have to pepper them. And what I mean by that is, let's just say, you've got some of the lower-valued homes that may be at a starting rate, let's just say, $120 a square foot. Well, in our schedule of values, we have a couple of other aces in our pocket that we can choose a different rate. For those million-dollar homes, we might put them at a higher rate per square foot. Because again, we're trying to make sure that equitably, they all pay their fair share. So some of the bigger neighborhoods may be peppered in some ways like that.
Can I jump in for a second?
I do have one more question I'd like to ask, sort of along that line. Oh, gosh, the wording of it has gone. Wow, it'll come back in a minute.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Jamie, just to be clear, when you say 219 neighborhoods, it may not be specifically, just for our people that may be watching this, your subdivision may have a neighborhood name, but that neighborhood, from your perspective, could be, to the average person, it's one neighborhood. But the way you all break it down, it could be three neighborhoods.
Yes.
So, so I think that kind of goes along with the chairman's question about Oak Valley because Oak Valley is a large neighborhood. And I think you kind of explained, that's broken down even further from you all since. So it's not necessarily all apply the same. And then within a neighborhood, it's not that we're, just to be clear for the people who may be watching, you don't put a value on every home in the neighborhood, the same value. You're appraising them with the same math.
Yes.
So not every home in Oak Valley is a million, a million, a million, a million for the sake of revaluation. But the calculation for this home and that home is roughly the same.
A good example to maybe help illustrate Bermuda Run. We've got it broken down to like, you've got your single-family homes. You've got your patio homes. You've got your condos. You know, those have all been separated out to where it helps us manage that group. Even though they're all in Bermuda Run, they've been separated out. So that's probably the best example that I can throw out to illustrate that one for you.
Thank you.
Yes, just as soon as we said that, it came back what I was getting, which was on a little bit different subject. When you have somebody that comes in and says, I know my property is just not worth that much. And then they go back out and get an appraisal from a certified appraiser that shows that it is considerably worth less than what it is. Is that something then that the Tax Department or the Board of Equalization and Review is, is that grounds for changing the value?
We, we do encourage appraisals. You know, if the homeowner wants to go get them, we highly encourage it. Is it 100% guaranteed that a change will take place? I have to honestly say no. And here's my reason why. If a fee appraiser goes out and pulls comps that, let's say, it was a, an estate sale. Let's say it was a sale between a mother and child. Or if it was a sale between an uncle and a nephew. Those sales may not be good sales. And I hope that makes sense. You know, we, but if the appraisal comes in and it's good quality sales, you know, it's been on the open market. You know, it's a willing buyer, a willing seller, you know, those factors, yes, sir, we will, I mean, we'll look at it anyway. But the better the sales that the appraiser uses, the better the chance that there may be a change in the value.
Just like foreclosure sales skew that.
Yes, yes.
But on that point, though, with the private appraisers, appraisals, is it not true that mass appraisers, as you call yourself, you have more tools now than you used to? So the disparity between a private appraiser and what you guys have done or do is probably not going to be as disparate as maybe it used to be.
Right. Yeah, the fee appraiser is going to look at that one subject property and just pick and choose five to six comparable properties. We're looking at the market as a whole. You know, the one thing that we have to also watch out for with fee appraisers is when we look at the market of that neighborhood, that's the houses that we, we don't go outside of that neighborhood. A fee appraiser may go outside of that neighborhood to find more like properties than what's inside that parameter or that group. But, but yes, sir, we utilize every tool that we have to the best of our ability. Are there some other tools that could help? I'm pretty sure there are. But right now, we do with what we have.
I hadn't heard anybody ask the big question, and I'm not going to ask it either. All I'm going to ask you is, is there going to be a point in the next 60 days that you come back to us and indicate to us the percentages, kind of what we're looking at here in Davie County? So when, when we're at the grocery store coming up here, first of the year, we, the appeals don't come directly to us. So we'll just have some idea of what we're, what we're looking at.
Yes, sir. Actually, I mean, I've got those numbers right here in front of me. I don't know how, you know, Brian, what do you think?
I mean, it's the burning question, so if, I'll ask it.
I, I don't want, I, my point is, we want it at an opportune time when you're ready for it, not when we're ready for it.
Well, I don't mind, I mean, actually, I'm glad you asked that question because for me, I think the citizens need to start knowing there's a change coming. And how much of a change is possibly coming. I don't want them, I don't want it to be a shell shock. I mean, I know it's going to be to a lot of citizens because not everybody follows what's going on. But if it's beneficial to helping the citizens get prepared, I'm all for it.
Well, we're ready for it then, I think. I, and I don't want to speak for Richard. I can't remember if I was a part of, Richard, I know you probably were of going to the four years. But I think the issue was at that point was, we didn't want all this shell shock. So that's the reason we're not doing it every eight years. We're doing it every, every four years. Now, this is an extremely unique environment. Because of coming, coming off of COVID, supply lines, cost of supplies. We see it, Brad sees it every day when we're having to budget projects and those kind of things. So we understand, but if you have.
What if I give you a range, would that be okay? Instead of the exacts or, because the exacts are going to be fluid. I mean, we're still examining and reviewing for the next three months. For countywide, you know, expect somewhere between 40 and 45% increase. That's kind of what we're seeing right now.
That's from the last valuation now?
Yes, sir, that is from the last revow. Now, if you want me to use the difference between current and 2025, it's going to be between 30 and 35%. You know, the major difference being, you know, if you use the latter number, that's taken into consideration that you've already got all the new construction or the added real estate. But if you go back to 2021, that takes out of the equation new construction.
But Jamie, my assertion during this whole thing, because I'm kind of play around with these numbers and we've been through a remodeling, a refinance, or at least some equity lines. There's the organic growth, but as we've discussed, some of this amongst ourselves, there's, there's a clear, not just an organic growth of new stuff during that, but a significant difference. I see a significant difference between the value of my home disregarding my remodeling between 2019, 20, and, or whatever, and now. Because of just, it is what it is. The home sales, is that not, I mean, there's a significant increase. It's not, yeah.
Yes, sir, and it's not just here in Davie County. I mean, other counties, I reached out to DOR and I've reached out to Kirk Boone, which is over the School of Government, to kind of get a feel of what the 2024 revows were of some recent counties. The numbers that I got from Kirk, you know, were anywhere from, I believe he said, 48 to like 65% increases. And my contact at DOR is just, you know, he's just putting a number. He's like, you know, 50% is probably a good round number that the 2023 revow counties were kind of seeing, so.
Isn't it true that, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but these, like, when you do like a home equity and they use all these Home Value Explorer-type products, the hub of where a lot of that information's coming from is public records. I mean, there's appraisers, there's all kinds of stuff. But I mean, they're getting their information from that. And, you know, numbers that I'm seeing is 35, 40, 50% on stuff. We, you know, we.
Are, are you prepared to ramp up to be able to handle the calls you're going to get? The appeals you're going to get? Do you feel like you're properly staffed in terms, because, I mean, let's just face it. You're going to get, you're going to get calls. Have you determined from those counties at 23, 24, what they, I mean, if you're, if you're hitting it 60%, you're getting phone calls? Are they, have you got some idea? Because the one thing we want to do is be sensitive to what people are unfortunately feeling here. And they're going to feel pain here. And so we need to have the people that are ready to respond and respond in a correct fashion. Because the thing that just concerned me a little bit about talking about what is an invalid reason for somebody to call, that's something we don't want to be communicating to folks. We want them to understand we're feeling what they're feeling. And so I just want to make sure we're in a proper position to be able to handle the calls, respond to the calls. And we're not dropping that all in your staff's lap if you need to do something that would, would more accommodate the number. Because I think this is going to be an abnormal time.
I think you're right. You know, most, most counties have not seen these kind of numbers in a, in a long time. I've never seen them in the rebounds that I've been through, so it's unique. Are we going to be ready? I think so. You know, the good thing is, is all my appraisers have handled appeals before, so they know how to do them, what to do. The volume, the good thing is, is even though the Board of E and R adjourns in the first Monday in May, we will still work after that. So we, I mean, we've got until however long it takes to settle the appeals. So we, I mean, we've got until however long it takes to settle the appeals. Uh, so um, I think we'll be okay. Um, you know, Brett, which I think he's done, I don't know if he's back there, you know, Brett gets involved. Oh, sorry, I was looking back there, it's where you started. So Brett gets involved, I'll get involved. Um, so yes, sir, I, I think we'll be ready. But what do you think?
Cause some people are frankly gonna be angry.
They will.
Because they don't know how they're going to budget these increases. So, you know, and, and I don't expect you all to just blow them off because they're angry. I don't expect you to take abuse either, but just, you know, it's, understand that they're, they're not gonna be happy when they first call, so.
It comes with the territory. I mean, I think it's kinda ironic that we just did the de-escalation training yesterday or day before yesterday. But it comes with the territory, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon to have, you know, a handful of citizens to highly be upset. But we'll handle those with respect. You know, we'll, we'll, I've always tried to use the term, we'll kill them with kindness. Um, that, that's kinda how we'll, we'll approach every single appeal. And then hopefully things, and I, the other part of the coin is, it's not, it's gonna come in different ways or different phases. Because we get the notices out, a lot of people don't look at them. But as soon as they get their tax bill in July, then it really hits them. It's like, wow, you know? So we'll have a, a bunch of phone calls probably in end of July, first of August. Uh, but unfortunately, they can only appeal the following year, they can't appeal this year, so. Uh, cause time has run out. Uh, but we will work with them every single call, best we can.
And I wanted to point out real quick that um, when we started the process of looking at reevaluation, we wanted to present to you all first and then um, see about presenting to our municipalities. Um, obviously, we do all their tax stuff. So um, I think Jamie is gonna prepare a version of this presentation to present to the town boards um, from here until December, um, because some of those same people that may call them may call you. So we wanna make sure we get an opportunity to get as much information out to the public as possible.
Does the Board of Equalization and Review do this every year? You say that in July, it'll be over for that year, but they can the next January then appeal?
Yes, sir, the Board of E and R usually, um, we convene the first Monday or Tuesday in April. And we always adjourn, I believe it's the second, first or second, excuse me, first or month, sec- first Monday or Tuesday in May. So we got a one month window that they're here. However, once they adjourn, if we've got active appeals that need their attention, they do come back. So it's not, it's not, their job is not necessarily finished when they convene. They can still uh, come back and sit and listen to appeals that were timely. That's, that's a, a good word uh, to remember. We have timely appeals and we have untimely. Untimely means that come, they come in after the board adjourned. And those are not um, to be heard this year, they will be for next year.
In, in fact, in fact, the Board of Equalization Review, all the years that I've been involved with them, and uh, we always meet after May, that first Monday in May, because there's always several appeals uh, that have been settled, compromised, both sides have agreed upon a number. And they actually have to approve that number. And uh, they can't, it just can't be approved by the uh, Tax Administrator's Office. Has to be approved by the Board of Equalization Review. And they may have a stack, I've seen stacks come in, you know, this thick of, of uh, that, that's basically one or two page documents for that many different taxpayers that they come in and then they have compromised and or uh, compromised may not be the word to use, but, but they have agreed upon a number, both sides have. And the Board of Equalization Review, uh, it may be June, July on some of those before, before uh, they're actually completed even.
So what we're looking at is not um, over four years when we have the reva- revaluation, that, that is the only time they can come in and appeal that evaluation.
Correct, so they can appeal, uh, attack, a citizen can appeal every year, as long as they own a property. And we do have some what I call habitual appellants. You know, we, we know them on a first name basis and uh, but that's okay, that's their right.
Do you have any ever that think the value of their house is not high enough?
Believe it or not, we do. Uh, usually, especially here lately with purchase value or purchase uh, value, purchase values being higher than what our assessed value is, they will, we've had new home buyers send us appraisals and say, hey, look, uh, I think you've got it too low. And you know, we'll look it over and if there's a correction that needs to take place where footage, bed, bath, you know, something like that, we can't just change it for value, but uh, you know, just for those reasons, we'll, we'll make some changes. And I appreciate those type of citizens, they are good, honest citizens.
And they've usually got their house for sale.
Well, that's a little something different color there.
No, they don't. They don't always, do they?
Oh, Richard, that's cynical.
True that.
I got a question for just the body as a whole here, is that can't we be at least somewhat proactive to prevent them? They're gonna get overwhelmed, but I mean, we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about an extreme situation where values have increased. But we see what's happening in other towns like in Wake County. I mean, it's gonna come down to, I don't want the citizens out there thinking if their value goes up fifty percent, that that means their tax bill's gonna go up fifty percent. So what kinda messaging do we do that there, you know, there's gonna be changes to the rate? We don't know exactly what it would be, but it's obvious under these circumstances, there's gonna be. And I just think that's a preemptive type thing. We don't know the exact budget necessary numbers, but we don't want the public out there already starting the narrative that we're gonna try to use this as a windfall for special projects and so forth and so on. So just throw that out there for any, the board, for whoever, I just think we need to educate people. We don't need to hide and say, well, I just need to be under the assumption that my tax bill's gonna go from two thousand dollars to three thousand dollars next year. And it's not gonna do that.
I think you could certainly commit that there's a possibility, but until we decide, you know, how much we're going to retain and how much we're going to give back. And I, I think there will, there is a good appetite to give something back. I, we can't overcommit, but I, I, I understand your point.
I think my point is, I wish, I hope people know that. I don't mind telling people that, I'm not gonna tell people we're gonna roll it back. But I think we, we obviously are not gonna keep everything at the same rate and create millions and millions of dollars, that's all I'm saying.
Well, at the end of the day, it's, uh, this board sets the, the, the rate. And uh, it will be up to us to, to, you, you know, in discussion with Brian and staff and Rob and to determine the issue of where do you go revenue neutral or above. And so um, but they gonna get the tax bill.
Yeah.
And so they will know. And uh, then it's going to be up to us when we address the budget, how we want to uh, utilize uh, the dollars that potentials that are there.
They're not actually gonna get a tax bill.
The, the end of January is actually a notice, it will show the new value, but it won't calculate a, a bill, no, sir, you're right.
The, yeah.
The bill will be in July.
I mean, they're gonna see a value and if they are business people, they're gonna make the original assumption that this is gonna happen. That's what I'm saying, that they're gonna assume it's gonna be that value based on current rate.
And your tax bills that, that'll be mailed out in July, they'll be based upon whatever that new rate is that y'all have adopted uh, bef- on or before June thirtieth.
So there's, you know, there's really two- There's really two phases to it. One we, one you have control over in terms of the, the appraisal, and then one we have control over.
Correct.
Any other questions? I'm sure there will be more.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jamie, appreciate y'all.
Chairman, uh-
Yes.
As tradition from our last meeting, I always wanna leave the floor open if there's any suggestions for October. I will tell you however, October, you all have a busy day that day because that is the same day that you typically meet with Senior Services as one of their open forums um, to discuss any county, city, government, local government issues. And I think in the past, most of y'all have well attended that, so um, we've already kind of stressed the staff to be to the point, but if there's anything in particular that you want us to look at in October?
Well, I, to me, uh, one of the issues that we've dealt with and we talked with Mr. Easter about it i- at the last meeting is uh, some of the things that we've sent back with him uh, in terms of uh, addressing issues of growth. How residential especially, but uh, I don't know if that's something you want, you're ready for in October. But um, that's something we need to, I think, take the next step with at some point. Of course, we can get with Brian individually and Karen if you have anything you wanna add to that, to that list. Anything else? Any other questions for Brian or staff that are here if we have questions?
I do wanna just say real quick, if anybody's looking for something to do tonight, it is the Miss Senior Davie Pageant at the Senior Services. It starts at six thirty. Um, we had a great time last year and I hope to have another great time this year.
Okay, um, I, I guess we'll, it has comments here. If we have any comments, I think we've commented all along, but Brett, if you, you have anything, Bonita? All right, we are thankful that you were here and I think it's been productive. And if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to communicate them to us or through Brian. And uh, we will uh, I guess we need a motion to adjourn. Richard makes that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Bonita, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank y'all.